Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Today is April 24th, and we welcome you to the town council meeting tonight. I would ask that each of you stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, if you wouldn't mind the roll call, please.
Council President Healy.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilman De Cruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Glad Hill.
Here.
Councilman Veely.
Here.
All members present.
Item number four, I'd like somebody to make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meetings, the work session on April 10th, and the regular sessions on April 10th, 12th, and 13th.
They're moved.
To approve Agenda Items 4A and B.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 At this time, I'd like to call Liz to discuss.
I move to add, to add on executive session to tonight's agenda pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's 42-46-5A2 pertaining to threatened litigation regarding the Mattoonik Sheet Pile Wall.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, item number five?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Item number six, under licenses, a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Critter Hut, DBA Critter Hut Aquarium and Pets, on Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, by Christopher Champlin. Is somebody here to represent Critter Hut?
Yes, Jeffrey R. Champlin.
Please come up to the podium and state your name, just for the record.
My name is Jeffrey R. Champlin.
Okay. And Jeffrey, what do you, what do you want to do?
We want to sell things on holidays.
Okay.
You have a long history in South Kingston, right?
Yes, it's really nice. We, you know, we broke up with you guys briefly going to Narragansett, but we're holding back.
We don't hold any bridges.
I appreciate that, thank you. But coming back is like putting on a favorite pair of jeans, so we're looking forward to many future years in the town of South Kingston with you guys.
You're going to be in the Wakefield Mall? I'm sorry.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Space is looking good.
Thank you.
What will, how many days are you going to be open?
We're open generally, we're only closed seven days of the year, closed for the major holidays, but seven days of the week for the most part.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6A.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, guys.
Happy to have you.
Next item on the agenda is item number seven, a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the town code, Chapter 6, which is about finance. Do you want me to read all through this, Steve, or do you want to just give a general overview?
That's fine. What we're asking here is to change titles of the person that's responsible for dealing with, with purchasing in the community. We change from administrative assistant to procurement administrator would be the title throughout the, the sections dealing with the surplus stock. And what we're also asking the council to do is to delete the phrase that says that the procurement administrator is authorized to, to sell all surplus equipment having a value of less than $2,500. We're asking you to take away the dollar value there. We'd like to be able to have the procurement administrator be able to deal with all surplus materials, equipment, and supplies where we could put those out for a competitive bid and sell to the highest bidder, or to be able to provide for proper disposal on the materials. So we'd ask the council to approve consideration through amendment of the Chapter 6 of the finance under purchasing, as I've just stated.
Any questions here at the table?
I'll just make a comment. This is, to me, a little more housekeeping and finance that makes it just a more efficient system, and hats off to you all, you do a fantastic job, and this is another step operationally, I think.
Any comments from the public?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve Item 7A as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. This brings us to our second public hearing to, relative to the proposed amendments to the town code, Chapter 17, as far as taxation. Steve, did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Certainly. Last year, when the council set up its goals and objectives, they had concern over the value of the veterans exemption. There was a review made of what exemptions were that were provided on a statewide basis, and the council last year increased the exemption from, by $20, up from $126 to $146. This year, the council has requested consideration for increasing by an additional $22 to bring it up to $168. This would put South Kingston at the state median for, for the exemptions for veterans. This would also give the council the opportunity to continue on a yearly basis to make changes within this ordinance. The $22 increase is worth about $22,000 worth of additional tax exemption value. Right now, the, the town has $10.6 million that it takes off the roll that's associated with veterans exemption, or about $165,000 in, in tax value. This would be inclusive of the, the next $22,000 that you have here. So the recommendation is to change the veteran of war from $146 to $168, and the unmarried spouse of a veteran of war to $168. And this is in accord with the, the town's enabling authority under state statute 44-3-5.1. Ask the council if there's any questions, certainly try to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, any comments here at the table?
We discussed it during our work session, and moving in the right direction.
I'm happy to see this jump in the timeframe from five years to just two years, where we've, we've met the state average, and I hope to see us exceed that. I think that we're a community of lots of great things, and the way we support our veterans is just one of them, so excited that we are continuing the tradition.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Item 7B as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That moves us to C, a public hearing relative to the adoption of the town council's final fiscal year 2017 and 2018 budget as amended, and to consider a petition filed pursuant to Section 4222 to the Town Charter entitled Budget C: Petitions to the Council Seeking to amend, to amend the town council's preliminary 2017 and 2018 budget, as was presented on March 13th, 2017.
In accordance with the Town Charter, 25 signatures are necessary to bring a question or petition before the council in advance of your adoption of a final budget for the fiscal year ensuing. The petition has been filed and has been certified by the canvassing authority through the canvassing clerk, having the appropriate number of signatures, to bring this question before the council. So the council needs to address the change. Essentially, during the current fiscal year, the town provided $51,387,349 to the school fund. The proposal before you this evening would be to increase that amount by 4%. That would bring the amount to $53,442,843. This would be an increase over the base year of $2,554,94, and it would be an increase of $1,361,765 over the council's preliminary budget, which was presented with a 1.35% increase over the fiscal '17 current year funding. So I would assume that there would be folks here this evening to speak to this before the council deliberates on it. I think you should call them forward at this point.
I would welcome the opportunity for anybody who wants to come up to the podium. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Doral Beasley, I live in Kingston. I just have a question that I hope you'll address as other people come up to speak. So the proposed budget increase for the schools, was it 1.35?
The preliminary budget that was adopted by the council is an increase of 1.35. That took it to $52,081,078.
And is that also reflected on the pages at the end of the agenda?
Yes, that's the preliminary budget that's on that agenda.
Okay, so is, then the increase from, would be $15.09 to $15.29, is that, that was in your, that's?
No, the estimate would be, as far as, if you're asking what the tax levy increase would be, I have not calculated it at the 4%. They have it.
So this 4% petition is in, different from the 2% petition? Was there another 2% petition that came forward to you guys?
Yeah, I haven't calculated what the tax impact would be at the, at the 1.35, it's shown, as presented on the document there this evening. So it's showing at $15, at $15.0
Twenty-nine cents.
And 24 cents. So it was showing at, at a 15, 15 cent increase based on the preliminary budget that had been adopted.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak on this topic?
Hi, I'm Brooke Conley, and I got this petition together with a couple of other people, a lot of other people, actually. And though we only had 25 signatures, it was pretty easy to get, was it over 100 more? So certainly the community members, a lot of community members support this. It was disheartening to see our own school committee member, Scott Mueller, reiterate that we only needed 2%. I can assure you, the custodial staff doesn't feel that way, nor does many in the, the school staff or the community members. When we make these kind of cuts, we are always doing it on the backs of the most vulnerable students. Affluent families are able to cover the gaps, you know? I had a situation myself where my son was refused necessary services from this district, and I was fortunate enough to have a relative help me to pay for it. Lots of people are not like that, and as, even though we have less of a student population, we have an increased population of kids living in poverty, as does everyone else in this country, every other town in this country. As many of us know, in the past eight years, all the income gains have really gone to people who are already wealthy. So we are living in an even more equal, even more unequal society than we have ever lived in. And although we may have disagreements about the budget, I certainly have many disagreements with the school committee and the administration, but this is not how you address them. That's how they do it in Congress, that's why everybody hates them. When the school needs things, we let them, we give it to the school, because it's the most vulnerable students who are always impacted. So I would like you to consider the 4%, and thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to the topic?
Bill Rosen, Kingston. Let me just clarify what the process is here. It's my understanding that you can turn this petition down, is that not correct? Yes.
That is correct.
And what happens after you, if you turn it down? What can the people who want this position to go forward have to do?
We actually, I think at this point, if I'm not mistaken, if the petition is turned down, if you will, we make a recommendation or a motion and approve an appropriate increase to the budget that would be approved this evening.
I think if, if people are still unsatisfied with, with the budget that we approved tonight, they'll have the opportunity to seek a referendum, they'd have to collect 200 signatures on a very similar petition to the one that brought it down tonight.
Correct. And if they collect 200 signatures, which are certified at that point, then there will be a, a vote to ratify that or turn it down by the public, correct?
It's a special election.
I think June is when it would
And about how long after this all, this process takes place, would that election occur?
June?
On the first Tuesday, June 6th.
June 6th. Okay, thank you.
Let me just clarify, 200 signatures and a change in the budget of more than $500,000, either up or down?
It's $250,000.
$250,000, up or down?
Well, this increase
But they would be going against the council's adopted budget.
Correct.
You had a petition, and it would be against whatever the council's budget would be, and it would be a vote on that. You'd also have a third petition that wanted something totally different, and whichever was the highest vote getting would be, what would, what would prevail?
Wait a second.
So someone could
What would be on the ballot?
What he's saying is that someone else could actually have a different petition, say for 0%.
Yeah, okay.
And depending on how the vote turns out, you could end up with either 4 or 0, as an example.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion from the public?
I've spoken many times in the last few years before councils, and as a council member heard, many, many, if you will, requests for what's considered proper funding. I don't know what proper funding is anymore. I do know, I've mentioned the Providence Journal article to you many times, that compared four cities in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, the average per student cost of all that group was less than $15,000 per pupil. We're $20,000, basically, now, just to use round numbers. Our cohorts, like North Kingston, we spend $15 million more than they do. Now, I can't tell you how they address the, a lot of their capital programs, but whether it's 10 million, 12, 15, same with Barrington, same with Smithfield, Cumberland. We're a wealthy community, but my goodness, do we spend a premium of money on our students. What I'm concerned about is even entertaining 2%, let alone 4%, because what you're doing is rewarding, rewarding bad facilities management by the school department. We've talked about this year after year since Bob Hicks was the superintendent. And frankly, had we had, as an example, Curtis Corner closed the last few years, you probably wouldn't be asking for more money now, because we would have had that savings from transportation costs alone. Look how many more kids could walk to school if we had five elementary schools open. And I'm in the real estate business, and every family I sell the property to, they want neighborhood schools, K through 6. Broad Rock can easily handle 7th and 8th graders. High school's now below 1,000 kids. I think what you should be doing with the school department is, given, given, given the opportunity, you should have a carrot and stick approach with them. They've just put out an RFP to study the situation, the population, money, cost, programs that they need for the kids, but maybe escrow money. Do the 1%. Escrow another $500,000 for that 2%. And if they come up with that formula, and do the work, and make a plan for next September, fantastic. But there are plenty of savings there, but we're not taking advantage of it. And what really has got me concerned here is what's going on statewide. We could have another pension problem if they reduce the investment expected return to 6.5% at the State House. Where are we going to find that money? Have you thought about Washington DC, Medicare? Just the smallest cut in the world, tens of millions out from us. And what you really need to pay attention to is you're making the folks that put the education funding formula together in Providence six years ago, seven years ago, a couple more years to run, you're affirming and reaffirming the major component of that, why we're down from $10.5 million to $6.5 million, it's absolutely parallel with the student population loss. There are other factors in there, but that's a major one. And you've got to think about that. And when they redo the education formula another couple of years, if you grant the 2%, let alone 4%, you're reaffirming to them that we're a wealthy community and we've got money to burn. That's, that's a fact. Dollars and cents don't lie. And then finally, I'll leave you alone here, the, I wish we had, there must be some programs with very few students that we could link up with Narragansett. Get a school bus from, you know, Lyft or Uber, something like that, because they're in that business now. There must be some way that you can ask that school department to start looking at merger of the programs with very few students in them. Maybe ought to talk about merger, period. So, anyway, I just thinking that rewarding bad financial management in terms of the buildings, the facilities, and rewarding special interests make for a political safe environment, which is not what we expect of leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Green-Bodzioni. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but after that last comment, I have to ask you not to consider rewarding bad behavior, but protecting our students, our children, that's what's important here. And at the last meeting that I was at, at least two of you asked that those of us who are so concerned and are asking for more, that we will stay involved, and we will keep an eye, and we are looking at the budgets. I am asking the questions, and I know lots of other parents are as well. We want to make sure that all of the children coming through receive the same education that my older children received. They all deserve it, and I will watch, and the other parents who promised that they will, will watch as well. You can count on us, if you spend the money, that we will make sure that it is spent appropriately. We're not going to let up. We're here, and we're going to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the problems of getting older, turning 70, is that you end up talking for the people of your age group. I retired from Electric Boat in 2010, I thought I was smart, and, but what I've found out since the year I retired, is that many of the, many of the increases to pensions and social security benefits haven't caught, haven't met historical levels. For instance, and the lady, a couple of speakers ago, she said, "The income gains in the United States are, go to the wealthy." Well, I can tell you for a fact that if you're on social security, if you're one of the 16, there's about 5,000 people in South Kingston that are 65 or older, if I read that right on your report, it's about 16% of the population. In the last eight years, the total percent increase, eight years, total percent increase of social security benefits, 8.8%, divided by eight years, it's 1.1%. So the people on social security for the last eight years, and that's two, that started like two years after, you know, the collapse of the economy, 2008, has been about 1% a year. Has anybody looked at their checkbooks or their, their bank statements in the last decade, when you used to get dollars for interest, having money in your checking account or your savings account? Now you're lucky if you got pennies. I get one penny a month in my checking account. If you're in the military, for the last seven years, the increase, total increase in pay for, for our servicemen and women, for the last seven years, 10.1%, that's 1.44% per So when you, when you say that just, you know, the 2%, oh, but let's not do 2%, let's do 4% because we can afford it. Yeah, we can afford it, and I have, I have grandkids. I had, I had children go through the school system, I have grandkids in the school system now. So I don't want the school system to become less than what it is, but I think, as Mr. O'Neill said, with some better planning, some, some thinking outside the box, and some realistic, looking at this whole system realistically, those savings could be found This year, one other, one last thing. So this year, the social security, for social security increase for 2017 is .03%. That's three tenths of 1%. So for my check, it came out to like four, about five bucks a month. Now, for, but the problem is Medicare went up about six bucks. So they have this, they have this rule that if the Medicare increase can't be, can't be adjusted by the social security increase, then they only take as much social security increase as they've given you for the Medicare cost. But if in the next year or two, the increase in social security arrives, the first thing they're going to do is claim or collect, start collecting from people that increase. So if you're, the average person, the average person in the United States is from the social security system. Retired worker, about $1,350, $1,360. This year was a $4 increase. Spouse of a retired worker, $2 increase. Disabled widower, $3 increase. As you can see, if you're on a fixed income in this town, you don't have those extra dollars to give to the town for a 4% increase to the school system.
Any further comments from the public?
I'm grateful for everyone who spoke here. I do want to, like, I would like to say, I don't think in times of crisis, we should be pitting low-income communities against each other for funds. That's not where you want to be, and it sounds like we're kind of getting there. If people are having problems paying their property tax because they're on fixed incomes, we need to help them with that. we need to help them with that. There are things that we can do. Jim Landyman, our congressperson, is not supporting Medicare for All. That could help a lot of people. Okay? So there are systemic things we can do to help people. We don't, it doesn't have to be us or them. It doesn't have to be that. We can help people on low income. We can support our, our kids in our school who are also low income. We can do both, and I don't think it needs to be in either or. Thank you.
Any further comments, please? Seeing none, Steve, I just have a question for you. I don't know if you know this, we would maybe have to contact Dr. Stringfellow. Do we know where we stand with the facility studies that were being done?
They've awarded the contract. So that study is moving forward. The completion of it is projected, I believe, before the end of the summer.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you. Any discussion here at the table?
Um, I think, so this is a two-part, uh, public hearing. In essence, we have the petition before us, and then what we'll do with the budget afterwards. I think we discussed this in the work session. There's two ways we can go. We can try to look at the petition and potentially amend what it's calling for, or deny it, and then move on to the budget and amend that. I think it's not really materially different which path we choose. Is that correct, Steve?
I'm not really sure of your question.
So it doesn't matter whether we deny the petition and then change the budget, or...
That's correct. If, if you were to deny the petition for the 4 percent, you would still have an opportunity to amend the preliminary budget that you adopted and change the 1.35 to whatever number you wish to bring it to.
Well, I think after, um, a lot of discussion with the school committee, of course, that we arrived at some type of consensus up here for the 2 percent. So I, I think what I'd like to do is to make a motion to deny the petition, and then wait until we get to the...
If you are at the point when discussion's finished, maybe close the public hearing and then go with the motion.
Okay. Yeah.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There really are three parts to this. There's still the public hearing relative to the entire budget, and I don't know if you had some discussion on the overall budget, so why don't we leave it open just in case that comes up?
Yeah, I think they could vote on the petition within the public.
Agreed.
I'll go back to my original motion.
Go back to your motion. Sorry about that.
Okay.
No, they never voted.
I, no, I don't know. It's hard to vote.
We vote.
Motion to rescind prior vote.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing's still open.
All right. Motion to deny the petition.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we close the public hearing? Or more discussion on the budget?
Do we have any discussion from the public, on the, uh, excuse me, from the public on the overall budget?
Let me place a couple of things on the record. Exhibit one on the council's agenda this evening presents the town council's preliminary budget that was adopted, uh, in, in March. The first page of that exhibit suggests what the tentative numbers would look like where the budget passed as presented, showing an approximate property tax rate increase from $15.09 to $15.24, or a 15 cent increase overall, which works out to be a levy increase of about 1.47 percent. The next several pages present the 10 different funds of the, of the town council's preliminary budget. At this point, if the council wishes to amend any of the budgetary funds that are listed here, a motion to that order would, would be appropriate at this time.
I would like...
Unless there's discussion from anybody on the 10 funds.
Anybody from the audience?
Yes.
Including the school fund.
Hi, my name's Cheryl Woodman-Cee from, um, West Kingston. I just have a, a question that was, um, for the record, I did sign the 4 percent petition. But I had a question about the, what is it, the private schools, that we pay a certain amount of our school budget to the private schools, is that correct? Because they're located in our town? Or do I understand that wrong?
No, it's, it's not because they're located in the town. Based on the number of students from our community that attend those, 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 are you talking about the charter schools?
No, I'm talking about proud, on senior clock.
It's a school book.
We don't provide any monies to those. We provide transportation.
And that's it? Just transportation? We don't give any money to the schools?
And textbooks.
I'm not aware of any, any contributions that are made to those, other than probably the books themselves.
And Cheryl, too, I don't know if, maybe you might be confusing it with, this year, something changed with Title I funding, where we used to, that money used to go just towards , um, the students in our public schools, and now it goes towards every student that goes to a private school within South Kingston, whether or not they reside in South Kingston. And that's new for this year.
And so why do we do that?
That's just Title I funding. That's a federal regulation.
There's no property tax that goes to the private schools. There's monies that go to charter schools, based on the students that live in South Kingston, that attend those private schools.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience?
My final one. Maybe it's because I've lived in Rhode Island all these years that I've become a little cynical, but it seems to me that, I look at the 4 percent petition, it's like a trial balloon that they know wasn't going to fly, because it gave you guys a cover to take, to accept 2 percent.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Jim O'Neill, one of the previous speakers, um, asked a good question there. As far as I know, books and transportation cover the private school kids. But a lot of times, they get beaten up indirectly, and I just wanted to give you a small statistic. Last time I asked the school department, we had approximately 600 kids, about 550 private schools, 40 home schools, almost 600 kids. And let's say, because these parents can afford to send their kids to a private school, let's say they have $400,000 homes, and just using the fire tax and the property tax forecast, so that's $6,000 a year you receive from that home, times 600 kids, that's $3,600,000. The school budget is 75 percent, so it's $2,700,000 that those parents, those parents sacrifice, and that's free money for our school system. And all of you need to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Discussion here at the table?
I just had a couple of comments. Just that over the last few weeks, I think I'm not the only one that's been inundated with phone calls and emails about the budget relative to the increase, whether it was 1.35, 02, 4, anywhere in that range. And it's definitely been heartening to see so many people come out and become engaged. I can't speak for anybody else, but for me, denying the initial 2 percent was less about the number and more about accountability and responsible spending. And although it's not our place to manage the school committee's budget, we do have a moral obligation to make sure the funds that we release are spent well and spent responsibly. And whether that means engaging yourself or people to help scrutinize and, and put those checks and balances in place, or if it's at the table saying, you know, no, we need to look at this again and, and come up with some solutions. I think that that's what I was trying to achieve, and whether it was 2 percent or 4 percent, didn't matter. It just meant that our kids were getting the education that they needed, and that the money was being spent in areas that were going to benefit our kids and teachers the most. And I think that over this process, we've engaged people, and I think that we're seeing more the administrative, at the administrative level and at the school committee level, there's a lot more reception for suggestions and ideas. We've already talked about going to their retreat in the summertime and sort of forging that relationship where, you know, we all need to be involved, we all need to, to take the good and the bad together. You know, it shouldn't be the school committee versus the town council. We should, as a unit, say, well, we all want what's good for our community, whether that's what's good for our students, or whether it's good for our retired taxpayers. So I was really happy to see all the people that came out and the discussion that came forward, and I'll be happy to support the 2 percent when it comes to it, so.
Piggybacking on what Liz said, I just want to make sure everybody understands, excuse me, as a council, it's our responsibility to make a decision about the amount of money that will be given to the schools. We absolutely have no say in how that money is going to be spent. Tasked as a school committee, we hope that they are all willing to do the right thing. And if they want to say that they're going to spend the money on technology or something of that nature, and we grant them the allocated funds, if they choose not to do that, we have no control. I encourage, and I want to ask each and every one of you, to engage when the decision is made, to task the school committee and the school administration to spend the money how you think is fiscally feasible and responsible to our students, because those children are the ones that come first. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you and, and task you, whatever decision is made here, that you engage and go to school committee meetings to make sure that they are spending your tax dollars wisely. Inevitably, with declining enrollment, there's going to be even further discussions that will have to be made, whether it be closing a school, consolidating classrooms, moving around teachers. Something's going to have to come to the table. Nobody wants to see it, because everybody wants the best for our town, our children, our families, and our educators who work so hard for the kids. But I implore you not to just come to a council meeting. Your support here is so appreciated, but you gotta go to the school committee meetings and hold them to task. That's the more important issue. Any further discussion?
Well, as I began to say, I'm, um, happy to propose, uh, an amendment that would take,
be the appropriate time to move to close the public hearing, and then you can have a motion to amend the school budget, if that's what you're going to do.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
All right. I would make a motion to amend the proposed budget so that the property tax transfer to the schools is 2 percent rather than 1.35 percent. I believe that will take the tax distribution to a total of $15.32 projected.
Correct.
And increase, uh, that budget line item by some $334,000 and change.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Uh, I'll just make a few comments. I've been crystal clear from the beginning. We've been through many medit, many budget hearings, and I, I don't want to rehash what I've said about, um, experts in the education field and the comments that they have made about how more money does not translate to better performance. I feel strongly that our administration needs to be held responsible, the school administration needs to be held responsible, and, um, I, again, I hope that you folks stay involved, but I feel strongly that it's, uh, it's too much of an increase for me.
I hear what Joe says in a lot of ways, and I think, um, it's been refreshing that the school committee is, has, has new leadership, I think, at this time, and I think more honest discussions are happening around that table. I think they've, um, really encouraged the town council here to be a part of all their discussions revolving around the facility study. I'm looking forward to being a part of that as it moves ahead. I do hope that the community is very involved in that process as well. But I do think the 2 percent is, is a good compromise position that will allow the school department to continue to educate our kids well. Could they use more? I'm, I'm certain they could. And we have to look at that as a community, how we can find more funds without necessarily relying on property tax transfer. So that's, that's a conversation that we need to have as well. But I think this 2 percent figure is something that the community supports and that we can support up here, as a whole.
I think Joe said something at the last meeting, too, that I've been thinking about. You said that, you know, we have a coun, a council that's, that's balanced, that has differing views, and I think that's really important, because, you know, we certainly don't always agree, and I think that you're almost at a disadvantage when you get five people that always have the same opinion about everything. So it's nice to have the different perspectives, even if you don't agree with them. So I certainly appreciate what you're saying, Joe, and I definitely weigh that, your thoughts with my own decisions when I make them, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Just, it's all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now the next motion is to adopt the final budget for 1718 as amended.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, moving on. Item number eight, a communication from Donna Tusheta, owner of Massage on Main, concerning one-hour parking limits on Main Street. That was continued from the last meeting in April. Is Donna or somebody here to talk about the signage?
I'm, Meg, I make a motion that we, um, put this letter on file. If Donna wants to come to a future meeting, she can certainly reach out. I know that Steve said during the work session, we are waiting for a recommendation from the, um, traffic committee, so I'm happy to wait for that before we, uh, we tackle that issue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. A copy of a letter from the Exeter Town Council on April 6th to the local legislators indicating their opposition to in-person early voting as proposed in section, uh, House Bill H-5700 and S-0422 is received, and the council further directs?
Make a motion to place Communication Item 8 be on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Resolutions adopted on April 11th by the South Kingston School Committee in opposite, uh, opposition to legislation regarding mandatory binding arbitration and continuation of expired teacher contracts in support of immigration protection policies has been received, and the town further directs, council directs.
I make a motion that we place, um, these items on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Communication from James Haldeman, Worship Master of Hope Masonic Lodge 25, in celebration of their 150th anniversary on May 20th, and inviting council members to participate. How would you?
I, I would like to provide a proclamation for their 150 years in our town, so if Dale could, with, if we provide information by the Masonic Lodge, we'll be able to generate a proclamation.
That's good. And I'm, oh no, it sounds great. Make a motion that we put it on file, then? Or do you need a motion for the proclamation?
I make a motion for the proclamation.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. G, a communication from Representative Robert Quatrochi, seeking support for House Bill H 5606, to create a legislative commission to study the feasibility of implementing a recycling program for multifamily residential units. That correspondence has been received, and the council further directs?
Make a motion to place Letter G on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, comments from interested citizens. If there is anybody in the, that, anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak, or offer some comments, now is the time that you could do that. Please come to the podium if you wanted to speak, state your name. Okay. We'll move on to item 10, the town manager's report.
Meg, actually, can I just make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
This Saturday is the South Kingston Little League opening day, and I know we've gone to it in years past, and I hope the council will go again on Saturday, but I'm really excited, because my son's playing T-ball this year, so it'll, he'll actually be on the field. But, you know, it's just a good experience to get out to Tucker Town Park and, and see the diverse teams that we have, and, you know, take advantage of the, the beautiful day and the beautiful space, so I'm really excited about that.
I'll, I'll just say, even though it's not town business, and I'm very happy that my wife Amber gave birth to a nice, healthy baby girl, Mary B. Collins, on Friday. And a huge shout out to South County Health and the Center for Women's Health there, they do an amazing job, what a great asset to the community.
Congratulations, people.
Yes, please?
I, Cheryl Woodman-C, again. I just wanted to let you know, we've been working for a year with the tenants over at the public housing, on getting a set of bylaws agreed to for a tenants' association, and they were finally approved tonight, so that was a big, big win. So I hope that, you know, you guys will be getting, once the association is formed, hopefully you guys will be getting some communication from them to do some good things, you know, over there, and, and I hope, and I look forward to your support for them. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Cheryl, thank you for all the work that you've done, I know you've been a tireless advocate for them over there, we appreciate it.
Steve, it's, your turn.
I'm all set with, I've gone over the items that I had in the pre-session with you.
And I'll update you in the executive session on my item.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any appointments that we will be seeking tonight?
We have some reappointments. Make a resolution to reappoint Edward Tourwilleger to the EDC for a term to expire in March of 2020.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Another resolution for reappointment for term, Carol Pilkington, to the Partnership for Prevention, for a term to expire June 2020.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we keep going?
Sure.
Reappointment for Mark Noble to the Recreation Commission, for a term to expire June 2020.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
A bunch of them, for the Route 138 Reconstruction Project Area Committee, reappointments, Doral Beasley, Gail Ferris, Diane Johnson, Thomas Marcello, Peter Menard, and William Rosen, for a term to expire May 2019.
Second? I have a question, though, they haven't met in several years, is it still prudent to have that committee?
The, the project at this point is completed as far as the design, the construction is not scheduled until the 2021 year, and I think the state, after they did the interim paving, are looking to possibly change that to 21, to 22, 23. So I don't think it hurts having the committee in place, if in fact we need an advisory opinion from them, or advocacy to be able to keep it on the tip.
Okay. I seconded it, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
One last one, a reappointment to the waterfront Advisory Committee, to James Fidel and Glenn Windhurst, for terms to expire June 2020.
Second?
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 13. A resolution to authorizing funds transferred is shown as on Exhibit 2. Did you want to address that, Steve?
Yeah, there are seven resolutions that address budgetary considerations. Based on the council's final budget adoption this evening, these resolutions will allow for the transfer of funds necessary from the Capital Improvement Program into the various capital reserves, as well as to the Debt Service Fund and the, and the Guild. I'd ask council consideration for approval as presented.
Motion to approve Item 13A as presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 13B, this is a proclamation that I will be presenting on Thursday, as May 2017, Older Americans Month. I won't read the whole thing, but the month of May will be designated for Age Out Loud, and it's for the entire month of May, and we are going to be hosting with a senior dinner celebration Thursday night as old- Moving to C, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet, for the purchase of a one-dump body truck and snowplow, in accordance with all bid speculations, in the amount not to exceed $45,084, including a trade-in allowance of $13,500.
Two bids were received, recommendations to go with lowest qualified bidder.
Okay.
Motion to approve 13C.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving forward, F, a resolution authorizing an award of contact, contract, excuse me, to Direct Energy, for the purchase of electricity at a rate of .0789 cents per kilowatt hour for a period December 1st, 2017, to December 31st, 2019.
In January of this year, we requested Direct Energy to give us prices for either amendments to the existing contract that we hold with them through December of this year, 2017, as well as if we maintain that contract without change through the end of November of this year, costs going forward for the next two years, one year, two years, or, or three years going forward. The, the town's currently paying 10.29 cents per kilowatt hour. The offer that was made with the blend and extend contracts, we didn't think were providing us with as much savings as could be considered. Were we to go with a new contract period starting in December of 17, for a two-year period through December of 19? These prices fluctuate on a day-to-day basis. In January, we asked for the price, we were quoted a price of 7.89 cents per kilowatt hour. At that point, we, we engaged that price, and we're asking council to provide final authorization and affirm the decision that was made in January.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion?
Motion to approve Item 13F as presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, a resolution authorizing the write-off of uncollectible Adult Day KIA services receivables in the amount of $15,315.47 to the General Fund Miscellaneous Revenue Account.
As noted in the memorandum from, from Trish Sunderland, we are recommending at this time to write off uncollectibles from the Adult Day Program. These would be fees that are deemed uncollectible after best efforts have been made to collect any of the outstanding balances. There's three different categories that are listed here, either client payments that we were unable to collect, Medicare reimbursements, as well as reimbursements through the neighborhood health plan of Rhode Island. Trish provides explanation on the detail. In terms of, this is over a seven-year period, approximately a seven-year period, and during that time, we estimate about $1.3 million in billings, therefore the $15,003 is about a 1.2 percent uncollectible rate, which I think is quite appropriate. I want to thank the Finance Director, as well as the Solicitor, for their attention in terms of obtaining a good deal of the receivable through repeated efforts, in terms of direct contact and letters and correspondence with responsible parties. I'd ask council to approve as presented on the agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this point in time, I believe the council needs to make a motion to adjourn and move into executive session, correct?
That's right, we're going to recess the executive session pursuant to 42-465A2 pertaining to threatened litigation involving the Mettunik Shepil Seawall.
So moved.
Second?
You need a roll call.
Council President Haley?
Here.
Council Vice President Collins?
Here.
Councilwoman DeCruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill?
Here.
Councilwoman Vealy?
Aye.
Unanimous affirmative vote to recess to close the executive session at 8:00?
It is-
8:32?
8:32.
8:32.
Mr. Forbes, did you get, did you get the hamburgers out for tomorrow? I will.